Individual with liberty and justice for all.
The people, the people, what, who's on what committees?
I got one if you need it.
You got one? Yeah, I had it, I just had it. I got it, I got it. Yeah, thank you. School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report. Nothing to report, resource committee?
Uh, res-.
Mr. Stevens.
Resource committee, uh, we met, uh, on September sixteenth. We approved our minutes from the twenty-second. Uh, the city auditor, uh, Mr. Sarason was there and gave us an update on net school spending. We discussed grants which will be on tonight, we discussed school choice, uh, funds which will be on tonight. We were given an update on enrollment and a budget update and staff updates, uh, also building needs and facilities committee update.
Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, policy committee, uh, Chair, Ms. Cragan.
We will be, um, scheduling our next meeting after this meeting, so we will have something to report out. We are going to work on the substance abuse, uh, publica- uh, policy that needs to comply with state, um, guidelines and the deadline for that is pretty tight, I, tight, I-
October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth, so we will be bringing that to you, um, very quickly. Uh, yep, I, probably the seventeenth, um, and in terms of foregoing, um, earlier readings that may have to happen, we'll know more, um, as we explore it, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, student support, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We met prior to this meeting, um, we approved our minutes from June twentieth and talked a lot about, uh, the gala funds that we've been raising and, um, we're moving forward with a process to roll out, um, options to staff members in, in the hopes that we'll have additional enriching programs after school. Uh, we talked about ways to really kind of connect, um, art, music, um, sort of specials, teachers, um, and kind of looking for creative ways to do that, given that a lot of the professional development time doesn't overlap for that group. Um, we got an incredible report about summer professional development, if you went by the schools and saw a lot of cars there, uh, that's not a surprise, there were three hundred and eighty-four different participants in summer professional development and, um, kind of a cool feature that was added to that, um, were the, um, action plans that participants left, um, planning how they would use that professional development in their work this year. We also got an update, uh, from Superintendent Ravenel about communication, um, discussions with adminis- the administrative team this summer and talking about really making use of the calendars that are on the websites and publicizing events well in advance for parents to really be able to plan for them, um, so, lot of great things, um, in that meeting.
Questions from the committee? Seeing none, school personnel, uh, nothing to report at this time. Executive committee? Nothing, nothing to report at this time as well. We have a facility subcommittee, Chair, Mr. Stevens.
Uh, we've initiated a new committee, uh, or brought back one that we used to have on facilities and we have met twice, uh, we met in August thirtieth and then again on September sixteenth. Uh, first meeting, uh, we affirmed our scope and goal of what our committee is going to do. Our school building maintenance director gave us an update on building projects, we were given an update on the SOLA, uh, update, uh, we have a list of future projects and we also talked about funding for projects. Uh, some, just a, a, a quick one, some of the projects that we have been, uh, looking at, uh, underground storage tanks, uh, sprinkler heads, uh, flammable, uh, materials that hang on the walls, uh, fire alarms, auditorium doors, uh, storage space, front doors in some of the buildings, electrical, having enough electrical outlets in buildings for today's, um, technology that we have, all of our buildings except for the high school are very old, so, uh, we need updates there. We, uh, also have looked at, uh, lot, just a lot of electrical repairs, we've looked at the Cupolo, uh, at the Long Joe School to be repaired, painted, uh, camera systems, uh, those are just some of the, there's still a whole host of, of things that need to be taken care of in the system and, uh, the main problem i- is like everything else is funding, so, uh, that's why we have brought back the facilities committee so we can prioritize and, uh, get the, the job done that we need to get done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stevens, I, I too want to echo the importance of this, this subcommittee, I'm, I'm pleased that we're, we're launching that, that group, uh, because we, as, as Mr. Stevens has stated, there are a number of needs and, um, and the resources are always challenging, so, uh, we have to chip away at it like we do everything else, uh, and, uh, moving forward, I, we don't have a student representative yet, is that, um-
We do, but they're not.
They're not here tonight, okay. And staff and student presentations.
Greg, the first one, I have the honor to reintroduce to you Gabriella Upson, who as you know was our Girls Nation representative, to, uh, come here and tell you a little bit about her summer experience and, uh, Jeremy, I'm gonna actually let Jeremy come and do a little bit more extensive introduction since you go to his school. And you won't feel so alone at the table either.
So Gabby is a member of the class of twenty-seventeen and, which is our senior class this year and since day one, she's gotten very involved in school and athletics and social activities and I would say, uh, one of the connections she's made through Gear Up is to get involved with leadership opportunities, leadership programs and she's taken a lot of those on, over the course of the three-plus years she's been at Fitchburg High, so, last year as a junior, um, we have a person at Gear Up, Dick Vaughn, who does a lot to help us coordinate students attending the Boys and Girls State, um, program that's fun, that's, uh, promoted by American Legions of, of the United, you know, clubs of, of the United States and it's held down at Stonehill College and, you know, what we do is a pretty extensive process of, you know, getting students recommended for that, both boys and girls obviously, and, uh, we've really grown our program and Gabby is a top student, you know, in addition to being a great, you know, person at the school, so she went down to, to, uh, Girls State in Stonehill and I think it's the second week in June, thereabouts, right about towards the end of the school year and, and what they do there and she can talk more about it, but I think what's really impressive is, um, you know, as a result of being there, she was voted by her peers from across the state at Girls State, uh, to represent Massachusetts at Girls Nation in Washington DC. So she can talk about that, but I think she's a tremendous example of, of the types of students that attend Fitchburg High School, they come in as freshmen, they, they get their, their academic load and in her case it happens to be, you know, honors and advanced placement classes now, uh, but, you know, they take that and then if they get involved in extracurriculars, whether it's sports clubs, you know, drama, hiking to, to the mountains, you know, whatever it is, we don't really care because what we see is that the students then, you know, turn that into usually really positive experiences, you know, and I think in Gabby's case too, she just has a natural leadership ability, whether it's on the field hockey field or whether it's in school, you know, with her peers or getting involved in social issues and so, you know, for us it was a really proud moment, you know, when we heard that not only was she at Girls State, but that she was selected by her peers from across the state to, to attend, you know, Girls Nation in July in Washington DC, so, without further ado, one of our finest, Gabby Upson, Gabriella Upson.
Thank you, that was so nice, um, it feels so funny because like, over the past few months I've done like so many things where I'm talking, but still, I get so excited and I want to smile each time because I'm so fortunate and lucky that I get to share what I do and I couldn't be prouder of, you know, the school system that I'm representing, I think we do incredible things and as Mr. Roach was saying, um, no matter what I think we're doing and I learned this very, very quickly coming into Fitchburg High, I think no matter what you encourage students to become involved in, it's absolutely beneficial one hundred percent, I mean, it's crazy to think that it's my last year of school and that it's my fourth year at Fitchburg High, um, and I know that whatever endeavors I may go on to in the future, it is, a lot will be put on the weight of Fitchburg High's shoulders and I'm very, very happy to say that and just the Fitchburg Public Schools in general, I think too. So, um, a little bit about Girls State, as Mr. Roach was saying, um, Mr. Vaughn, he has an, an intense selection project, process to say the least, um, essays and forms and you have to really dig down deep and think about what you've done throughout those, you know, three years of high school that you've gone through and I was so excited to send in that application and I was fortunate enough to be picked as, um, a delegate for our school and Girls State itself, um, I know some people don't really know what exactly the prerogative of the program is, but it's a mock state government program, so you go in and you're placed into a town and then immediately on the first day you elect, um, town officers, so there's a mayor and there's a school committee and a fire department, um, uh, that sort of thing, so you elect those and you sort of live in your town or city and the towns and cities also have backgrounds which are based off of, um, real places in Massachusetts and then from there you can run to elect your constitutional officers, so I ran for lieutenant governor, um, and it was so much fun, I was so excited because I'd never really gotten to exercise that passion for government in a way like that before, um, I didn't even know that I had some of those feelings inside about the government, I think a lot, I, I learned a lot, um, as, as I was going through the process, so, I did that and I ended up making it to be my party's delegate and then I lost, but I'm very lucky that I lost because if you do win, because that is the second highest position at the program, you can't go to Girls Nation because you can't be a lieutenant governor and a senator, so, the following day we elected, um, or I suppose nominated who your, the delegate for your town would be to go to Girls Nation and I was elected and then I went through an interview process with the, um, coordinators of the program and I was asked a lot of questions that, uh, required a lot of self-reflection and I think reflection back on my actual city and my actual school, but also on what I can do to change that and also about my, um, fake city and, so, uh, they announced it like a little talent show that we had that I had won and I was a little bit shocked because what I didn't realize was that so many of these girls had had government experience before, I really had no idea that half of the programs existed that they do, um, so I was lucky and I think I was in the right place at the right time and I am confident in saying that I think it was, I deserved it and I am excited to say that because I think that's something that took a lot of courage for me to realize and, um, by the end of July I was flown down to DC and Girls Nation was like Girls State on another level, I mean, I don't even, I don't even know where to begin because if I thought the girls at Girls State were cutthroat, like, little did I know, the girls at Girls Nation, they were like, "Oh yeah, we've already met the president twice" and I was like, "I haven't even like met the president in my class", like, like, I don't even- Yeah, I know, so, yeah, some of the girls had been, you know, they'd met their president and I met Senator Warren in March, um, like, by chance, like, it wasn't even supposed to happen, but I got, I met her and I got a selfie with her, so I at least had that and she's like, you know, especially with my age group, like, she's like super like popular, like, she's like hip for the government nerds, so everyone was like, "You have a selfie with Senator Warren?" and I was like, "Yeah, I do." Um, so, the, it's similar to the process that Girls State has in the sense that you elect officers, but, um, you elect a president and a vice president, so, you are randomly split up into party and then you would elect, um, party leadership, so like party chair, party vice chair, um, like, like the campaign committee which would create decorations for your candidates, um, the, uh, rules committee which, um, would select the rules for the election and like how the voting process would work, so I got to like experience something that's so cool and unfortunately I will not be eighteen soon enough to vote in this election, so, I got to technically vote in my first election, um, it was, it was real, it was, um, we had to register and we got a little "I voted" sticker, uh, but, uh, simultaneously while that is going on, there's also, um, the most, actually the most realistic mock senate program for teens in the country, um, so there is two girls from every state which is most resembling of our senate and so, um, we had Hawaii and Alaska this year which was like the first year in like twenty years that Girls Nation has had all fifty states represented, so, all one hundred of us were there and we would have five-hour senate sessions of bills and amendments and going down to the well and all these girls had done this before, so that was also very nerve-wracking, but I had a lot of senators around me that encouraged me and eventually I got up to the well to speak, uh, despite, despite the fact that many girls had had mock senate experience before, so, I did get down to the well, I debated the bill and, uh, I don't even remember what the outcome was, but it was, it was very exciting and it's interesting because I've been so lucky, I mean, I have an incredible family who is super involved with Fitchburg Public Schools as it is and I was fortunate that I have a lot of talents and a lot of gifts that were recognized and, you know, made known to me at a young age, um, so I never really struggled growing up with confidence or becoming a student leader and getting involved, but there are so many people that do and I think to be in those shoes of not having that experience and being around girls who've been doing this for years, it, it put me in a different place and I think it put me in the right mindset to come into this year and luckily I was approached, um, by Superintendent Ravenel to speak and I think, um, that totally became the central message of what I wanted to share because it's important that we make sure kids are involved and it's important that everyone feels the same way I do because it would be very foolish of me to say that I'm the best student or I'm the best athlete or, you know, I'm the best at everything I do, but I do try and I think I had the courage to try and there's so many kids that don't, so I think I commend all of you for, you know, celebrating Fitchburg Public Schools and making sure that what we do is known and that it's, I think it's so important and I'm very, very lucky to be here today and thank you so much for having me.
They may have questions.
Oh yeah, questions, sorry.
It may not.
I entered that on a quick note.
But they often do.
Oh, uh, sure, uh, Gabby, I've been following your career with great interest.
Thanks.
And, um, that was a wonderful presentation, you make a tremendous impression, um, on us, I had only seen pictures and I, I love that you're in our schools and that you're appreciating and that you're giving back at such a young age and would you run for governor when you're eighteen? We need, we need someone.
Who knows?
Yes.
Sure, I am, you're such a eloquent speaker, unlike myself, so, I give you kudos there and I love that the passion in you just kind of comes out 'cause, and I love that you said you're not the best at everything 'cause, um, I think, I know for myself, I'm always hard on me, I'm like, "I, I should be doing better, I should" and I love that you said, "At least I gave it a shot, I tried" and as you move on through your senior year and maybe doing those college applications and hopefully everything's positive, but keep telling yourself that, at least you tried and, you know, reach for this, the moon and you'll land among the stars, right?
Thank you, yeah.
Well, Gabby, I would just say, I, I think it's unlikely that you're intimidated by anything, but, don't be intimidated by those kids who say, "Oh, I've already met the president" because really what we need are the people in there fighting for the kids who don't get to meet the president, right?
Yeah.
And you're that kind of voice, so, really be proud of that and I think you should be proud when you're not necessarily exposed to all the things that other people have, so, well done, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Yes, Miss-
And I just want to add, once you get over that incredible shyness, you'll do-
Oh yeah.
Well, thank you Gabby and, uh, we'll see more of you this year as we move through the senior year with your whole class, so, enjoy, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you may remember, uh, Ms. Normandin came and presented, uh, that White Mountain trip and you, most of you took an interest in hearing about it, I don't know how many of you wanted to go, uh, but we, you asked her to come back and talk about the trip, so she's here with some of her students to share a little bit about the Mount, uh, the White Mountain trip.
Thank you, so, um, go ahead.
Take a seat, yep.
Uh, so, yeah, we just wanted to come back and thank you again for your support of the Outdoor Adventure Club and all of the trips that we've done over the past few years and Daniela and Tyson are here, if you have any questions about the trip, um, they'd be happy to answer them for you, um, Daniela is a senior and Tyson is a junior.
Before or after the film, which?
Oh, it's just a photo.
Oh, it's just a photo, okay, it looked like a video.
That was the pinnacle of our, our hike, that was the, uh, the highest point that we got to.
Well, that's the cue, what was the pinnacle of, of the trip for each of you?
Metaphorical or otherwise.
I'll go first? Well, the pinnacle for me was just being out somewhere new other than Fitchburg, I do love Fitchburg and I like to travel also, so it's nice to get, um, somewhere different from somewhere, from, you know, where you live, I wasn't homesick, but it was nice to like see a whole new view, from the photo, you can see everything, it's beautiful and it's good to have a nice fresh air and have a nice clear mind, just not to be, and just to be stress-free for a little bit and it's, just clears your mind and just feels great. For me, the best thing was just being with everybody else, 'cause, but going alone is like a, like a physical experience, so it looks nice to you, but when you go with like a crew or like a family, it feels a lot better mentally and physically, so it feels nicer to bond with everyone and to see everything for yourself and then to share with everybody else.
So I think my favorite part was also getting away from Fitchburg for a while, I always liked seeing new places and, um, when I found out about Ms. Normandin's club, it was, I think my sophomore year and my friend and I were like looking through a bunch of clubs that we should join and we were like, "Oh, the Outdoor Adventure Club", we're like, "This looks like something that we would actually enjoy because we love being outside" and sooner or later we actually joined the club and we loved it 'cause we never go like, we could sometimes do a repeat of the same trip, but most of the time we go to different places and it's really, um, fun to see different places and I just loved that we were able to stay the night and I knew that I wasn't gonna be able to do that for the summer 'cause I was really busy, so, that was like my opportunity to actually go out and, um, have like my own little sleepover with my little family that I made in school and I enjoyed it, it was all different, the food was different and my favorite part was probably just, um, it was more like a motivation thing because going up the mountain, you had to keep encouraging yourself to keep going and that's kind of like what you had to do in life every single day, so, that's why I enjoyed it a lot.
Had you ever done that before?
Oh yeah, I've gone mountain climbing several times.
A little bit.
Yes, I was.
Questions?
Good, okay.
Do, can I, do you train, uh, like, uh, did you, do-
We do, um, shorter day hikes over the course of the year, um, but it doesn't always end up being the same kids-
Yep.
-that are, I try to, for the big trip, um, require that they've done at least one other-
Okay.
-hike with us over the course of the year and these two, as they mentioned, um, have been in the club for, for three years, Tyson since freshman year and Daniela since sophomore year, so I, you know, I knew about their, um, experience and, and ability to, to be on the trip, um, but there were a couple of new faces, uh, that had to sort of convince me that they were ready for this level of challenge and they were, they did, they all did a great job.
Great, well, and you should always be pushing yourself beyond what you think your limits are, right?
Um, so we have some really great hiking trails around here, Watatic, Wachuza and so forth, um, did you guys train on some of our local trails?
Um, I believe we did do Watatic.
A little bit, yeah.
Watatic, that's a great one-
Tradition. First one always.
And we've also done Flat Rock which is-
Oh yeah, that one's fun.
A nice-
Nice relaxing one, just flat.
Close by to the school, hike, um-
It was great, it's fun.
I like the more intense ones though.
Oh, yeah, you're cool.
Maybe on your next hike, Watatic, you should challenge some of the school committee members.
I'll race, I'll race.
You're gonna win.
Megan, I'd just like to thank you for continuing to do this for our students, it's very important, yeah, thank you Megan.
Thanks, Megan. I love it.
Okay, well, thank you guys.
When is your next hike? When is your next hike?
Uh, well, we usually try to do the bigger one in the spring, like right after school gets out, um, but we usually start with a hike in October locally.
Do you have a date and time for that yet?
We don't have that yet, but I can let you know if you'd like to join us.
Send it to, send it to me and I'll s- um, make sure that all school committee members have an opportunity.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's fun, join, I recommend.
Ooh, yes.
Oh yeah, I didn't even know that, I didn't know that, I didn't even know that, something new every year.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's one thing I've learned here in the last eleven years is you never know when a staff member approaches you what they're gonna ask you, so, um, the beginning of school, I was, um, in one of our schools and Ms. Jeffrey approached me and, um, definitely approached me with a request I'd never heard before and I will let you, I'll let her share that request with you.
Good evening, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Debbie Jeffries and I'm a teacher at Crocker Elementary School. We have an exciting event coming up that we are hoping that the city, uh, residents in Fitchburg and outside of Fitchburg will participate in. On Saturday, October fifteenth, we will attempt to break the Guinness World Record for the largest display of scarecrows.
Wow.
The record is held in the UK with a total of three thousand eight hundred twelve, we are trying to reach four thousand. You might be asking why? My husband had the same question. Um, I have noticed so many positive things in our city and I saw this as a way for Crocker to contribute in bringing the community together. I'm asking everyone here and at home to build at least one scarecrow and bring it to Crocker. For every five scarecrows an individual donates, they will get a chance to win a prize and the big prize is going to be a hundred dollar bill. So there are some guidelines that must be followed, uh, and Guinness says, "For the purpose of this record, a scarecrow is defined as a clothed, human-shaped figure stuffed with straw or other materials designed to scare away birds from crops." So the scarecrows must wear two articles of clothing and the scarecrow must be able to stand firmly in one position, so we are thinking, um, strapping, um, it's, you know, thinner wood that we could cut and make a T and then we'll put it into the ground. So we're also accepting donations of strapping, uh, brown paper bags and pillowcases for the heads and shredded paper or newspaper for the stuffing, um, also food for our volunteers and gift certificates for prizes. In addition to the scarecrows, just to let you know the things that I have to do, because when you apply for a Guinness World Record, you can pay a good sum of money upfront and you'll hear right away if you've been accepted or not, um, or you can wait twelve weeks and then they'll let you know, but if you submit the money and they don't accept it, you don't get the refund and it was like six hundred dollars, so I chose to do it the long way, um, but we didn't hear for fourteen weeks and that's why this seems like it's last minute, um, it, it really isn't, even though it is. So what I have to do is I have to photograph each scarecrow individually. Yeah, I know.
Wow.
Complete a detailed spreadsheet, have two witnesses to count and these witnesses can't have a connection to the school, um, they suggested like, uh, the police or government officials, so I still am looking for those two witnesses. I have to have videos of both witnesses counting and the other thing is media attention. I have contacted all of the TV stations, Channel Seven did put us on their calendar, um, I'm doing a public service announcement for FATV Wednesday night, uh, the MTA is putting us out on social media, I have a Facebook page, "Calling All Scarecrows", so if you could like and share that, that would help us as well, um, I have notified the local papers, I'm hoping to get some coverage before the event as well because this could help promote it, um, it's gonna take a lot of people and a lot of hard work, so if you'd like to volunteer, please contact me at Crocker and also, like I mentioned, the Facebook page, "Calling All Scarecrows", um, and let's help us get Fitchburg not only on the map, but on the globe. Anyone has any questions?
Questions?
Nick Capasso might be a good, uh, judge, you know, not, you know, a good verifier, the, the director of the Fitchburg Art Museum-
Oh, okay.
-for the person to verify.
Yes.
There's, there's a connection there to art and- For the person to verify. There's a connection there to art and somebody in the.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any size restriction to the scarecrow?
I have a picture I can share with you later of the last record and they all seemed about the same size. And they don't tell you it has to be a certain size, but it, but the way it's mentioned, like a human clothed figure, we're thinking if it could be like maybe around five feet. Someone mentioned making a baby one. And although that's cute, it also mentions it should scare away birds from crops. And I'm thinking a small one, they would say if you put that in a field, it wouldn't be seen. So I don't want us to, even if, you know, we get the 4,000 scarecrows, not get the record based on a technicality like.
Put dog clothes on it.
Yeah. You know?
So like a five-foot minimum, maybe you'd be saying that as part of the parameters? And what time is the event on the 15th?
It's starting at 8:00 AM. However, we will accept donations of scarecrows that week, anytime you want to drop them off at Crocker, because we are going to have to start putting them in the ground sooner. And we're planning on this going until we stop, which could possibly be 11:59. It's going to take, it's going to be backbreaking.
And it's just going to be in the field in the back?
It's going to be in our middle field. And what we plan on doing is leaving it set up for a couple of days so that if anyone wants to come and see after, they're more than welcome to stop by.
Well, we'll do whatever we can to help get the word out.
Please. You know, we could have a scarecrow building party with school committee members and central office personnel and grandchildren, children.
Okay.
Is on our Pittsburgh, on our Pittsburgh Public School page?
We can. We can. We hadn't done anything yet until this was presented because.
I would love that. The more, you know, I mean, and everywhere you go, I know everywhere I go, I'm talking about scarecrows. Doctor's appointment's out of town. Lunch, lunch in Maine. And believe it or not, I met someone who lives in the western part of the state who was having lunch and she is so excited. I do think she's going to show up with a couple scarecrows. And the doctor's office, there's someone that's from Pittsburgh that works there and she's going to collect them from all the employees and she's going to bring them. So.
Well.
I think we should get Pittsburgh State involved.
Oh, I did. I should have mentioned that. I contacted Shane Franzen and he is very involved with a lot of the clubs. And I happened to call the day before, I guess there was a group of 120 clubs and organizations that were meeting. So he was going to promote it. And then that Saturday, they were having 65, I don't know, groups or whatever that were required for training. So I did send him out an email just asking, you know, how it was received, but I didn't hear back.
Well, since the scarecrow is the one that thought he didn't have a brain and then found out that he did and he was very intelligent, I think it's a perfect activity for a school system.
Thank you. And I, just to let you know, I chose this too because I thought a scarecrow is something anyone can build. And it's not intimidating for families that might feel a different type of assignment is. This is something that they can do together and everyone can be a part of.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Are you sending it home, Debbie, to all the students?
We did with our school.
Can we? Yeah, we'll do all that.
Get it. Yeah.
Yeah. I just shared it on Facebook, on FBS First.
I just did the same thing.
Awesome.
Thank you.
See that? It's already spreading.
Thanks. And that, and that's today, social media is, and that's what's going to do it for us, I think. We need people to come.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You ready? Approval of minutes of the regular school committee meeting, July 11, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, may we go out of order because we do not have a student representative?
I'm so sorry. Transportation became a little difficult, so that's why we had to.
Sure, it's all right.
But the few things that I'd like to talk about were changes that we've been making to the Pittsburgh High School. A lot of students have become more involved over time. And over the summer, the seniors class and the junior class specifically went to try and make a new student parking lot. So basically, we went and we painted the lines red to try and change up things. And we also took the crosswalk and painted 2017 on it. We've been making minor changes just to show that we still care about FHS and we wanted to see it improve. Another thing that we did was on the 8th of September, we were able to open up a school store. A while ago, we had a school store, but it ended up not continuing because of minor difficulties. But next to the concession stand, we now opened up a new school store with plenty of supplies. Also, last time we met, we talked about division because of different, like, Honors Academy students having Chromebooks and things like that. However, Mr. Roach and his team were able to provide us with Chromebooks with the C for the senior class.
This is the team, right?
Oh, okay. So, and we will be getting them, I believe, by September 22nd.
Thursday's the plan.
Awesome. Thank you. And another change we've been making to the school is our fan section is usually down near the doors of Crocker Field. However, we thought that because of the area, we're usually far away from the field and the football players. And also as a school, if we come closer together, we'll all be united together and it'll show more of a support. So we moved the fan section down closer to where the parents sit. We took two sections. We were able to bring the band and the cheerleaders. And the feedback I got back from it was that everyone enjoyed it, everyone had a good time and everyone was close together. So everyone had a lot of fun and they thought that it was better because they were right where the football players are, they were screaming. And the football players even themselves and the coach mentioned that they were very happy about that because they felt more of a support and kept the team going.
I understand. That was the way it used to be.
Yes, it was in the beginning. It was near more Dunkin' Donuts, but then they changed it around.
Right. Yeah, good, good for you.
The sports section would be that soccer won against West Boylston. The score was five to three. Our girls soccer and boys soccer are doing very well. The boys soccer won against Moni Tech, four to nothing. And tomorrow, they have their, one of their biggest games against Marlboro. And it is going to be, I believe, at 3:30. And one more important, one of the most important things that happened was that we had an A+ scholar. Her name is Shalena Gordon. She did a fantastic job and they came in to interview her. However, when they came in to interview her, they wanted to do a segment on Class of 2017. And so we were their morning wake-up call. They came in, interviewed us and had us start the show. Yeah, it was, it was amazing. And we had a good time, the class doing it. Other things that happened are the SAT testing. We have October 1st and October 19th schoolwide. So many of us are getting prepared for that. And there's college fairs. And one keynote especially would be that Gabriella Upson, she was, she attended Girl State and was able to rank into Girls Nation, which has been something everyone has been very proud of and very happy for.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes.
Where were the, I didn't see any lines painted wood.
Oh, really? Oh, not for the staff, just the students.
Oh, okay.
But we will try to get there too.
Oh, okay.
It's a work in progress.
Because I drive up there from time to time. I said, I didn't notice anything.
May I just say, I was, I was in the crowd Friday night and it's impressive. Like, the school is really cohesive. And you really kind of saw that there. So you, you all are doing a nice job.
Thank you so much. We're glad to hear that.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none? Approval of minutes of regular school committee meeting, July 11, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Approval of the minutes of the school committee working meeting of August 22nd, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Is there a need for executive session? I don't believe there is, right? Correct. New business, delegates for the 2016 MASC, MASSSS Joint Conference, November 2nd through the 5th, 2016. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Stevens be our delegate?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for Mr. Stevens to be the delegate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Any unfinished business from previous meeting? Seeing none? Communications, Ms. Craig, and you wanted to?
I've got, yes, I've got a, a few things that have been coming up. So the first was the Day of Caring, which we had on Friday. And I got to be part of a group at Rhinegold School. And where is the T-shirt? So you might have seen, folks might have seen folks with these gray T-shirts all over Pittsburgh and the area. This was sponsored by the United Way of North Central Massachusetts. They did a superb job of gathering folks. Jana Harrison for Pittsburgh Public Schools got the word out. And we had so many folks at Rhinegold, there were twice as many as expected. So Jim Dufres was the nominal sort of leader of activities. And the activities included painting the wall that is on the perimeter of the school with the back, the back playground. We painted a picnic table. And then Jim had to take off and somehow I became the foreperson. And I got to supervise Bill Barletta, former building maintenance director who got stolen by Pittsburgh State. And we, and I know, that's okay. No, it was great to all work together. And I wanted to do a shout out to Bemis in Lancaster who sent really great volunteers who volunteer every year, as well as Tyco Simplex Grinnell, who also sent volunteers. And Bob, you came and took a photograph, I believe? Yeah. So we've got a record of this. And everyone marveled at how much work these volunteers could do that would have cost our schools thousands of dollars. To have had that, that wall painted, to also to, the kind of litter pickup that happened afterwards and the weeding that we did around the periphery of the school, the entire school. And that is a 75,000 square foot building, I believe, Rhinegold. So there, there's a lot of turf around it. That, that was great. And we got the kids who were going out for recess to do a shout out. So they, I don't know, 120 kids yelling, "Thank you." Everyone heard, the volunteers. And it was, it was really nice. And Pittsburgh Public Schools supported this effort with lunch. Thank you, Jill Lucius and Dave. That was very cool. So now that we know about this, we need to get the word out to our school committee so we all can participate as well. Did we have another school that was getting caring on the Day of Caring? I think there were, you know, this happens all sort of over north central Mass. Coming up is, please vote no on question two. Public funds should be for public schools, period. And to that end, our superintendent, Andre Rabinell, has a superb editorial in today's Sentinel and Enterprise, "The School Choice Dilemma and How It Hurts Urban Districts." And this is kind of a reality check on what this issue is about. And I heard from former mayor Lisa Wong, who is now an adjunct instructor at Clark University. Her students in a, in a class called Business and Society there voted 100% to vote no on question two. And they came to that conclusion by looking at both sides of the issue and doing independent research. I thought that bode really well for the citizens of Massachusetts. The only way we're going to defeat this and not lift the cap, because within 10 years, there could potentially be 120 charter schools siphoning funds from us, is to, for people to speak to others. There will be a canvas this Saturday, starting at the FEA headquarters at Park Hill. There will be another canvas, I believe, on October 8th. This is, this is really crucial. I mean, this is what we're here to do. We're here to protect our school dollars for our kids. Also, oh, we've got another star. You know what? Wesley Agrey, senior at Pittsburgh High School, he became an Eagle Scout. Yeah. And I think being, reading up what it takes to be an Eagle Scout, I, I think being a doctor is harder, but not by much. They are very exacting. So we should get a card. I, I can pick up a card for Wesley and next school committee meeting, we can sign it for him. That's a really neat thing. Finally, in my work with Be Positive Therapy Pets and Community Education, we are doing the second vaccine clinic for this year. And thank you, Paula, as we were, we will be getting flyers to all the kids in the schools. And there are flyers on the tables. Please take one home. Please put it up somewhere where folks can see it. You know, neighborhood grocery, you know, neighborhood store. I'm going to get a bunch to Market Basket. It is Saturday, September 24th, this coming Saturday, 10 to 12 at the Pittsburgh Fire Station. It's just $10 for a rabies shot. It's just $10 for distemper. It's 20 bucks for microchip. A microchipping in a vet's office is about 100. So we hope to have another great turnout. The fire department is going to do activities with us, with Be Positive and Friends of Pittsburgh Dogs. And the fire department is offered to do tours and we'll have a kids' activity area. So kids who are waiting in line, because we move that line along, but you know, it does take a while, we will have all kinds of stuff for kids to do. So that, I hope that we, we see everyone with their dogs on a leash and their cats in a carrier. And no, we do not do people. So Rabies Distemper Microchip Vaccine Clinic, Saturday, September 24th, 10 to noon, at Pittsburgh Fire Station. And that is my report.
Questions?
One more quick comment on October 5th, MASC, school committee members. We will be having a meeting here for Division 9. And we will be talking about the resolutions that'll be held at the conference and also charter schools. Ms. Craig is also the secretary for Division 9. Division 9 is the urban division, all of the cities in Massachusetts. So I don't know how many we will have here, but hopefully we will have a turnout.
I will personally invite the, all of our members in Lemonster. There are going to be three Lemonster School Committee members at MASC this coming November. And I spoke to Mr. Stevens about our two school committee representatives getting together and talking. So anyone at, at this table, any of our school committee, please come October 5th. Division 9 is the urban districts of Massachusetts. We have a lot of power. We have never exercised it as cohesive urban district units. And we're the ones that will suffer the most with this, that, you know, this ballot issue. So thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Any questions?
Thank you. And we're at, now at the public comment period. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Yes, sir. Please.
If I may, just remind you, five-minute limit, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
I did want to rehash what I talked about.
Thanks.
In, are you familiar with the fourth amendment? It's the search and seizure amendment. I mean, I know you are.
You'd have to. Could you sit just because the microphone's at home and, yeah, thank you.
In US versus Place, they kind of took away a lot of the Fourth Amendment rights simply because they allowed dogs to do searches. Dogs are considered no longer, a dog search is no longer considered a Fourth Amendment search. It's outside of that realm because they're searching around a bag. They're not actually touching the bag. They're only searching for illegal substances. So there's been some additions to that, like it was in an airport, so it's only temporary. It's not like a place of residence, so it's a temporary spot. And so there's been some additions through, through time. But it removed a lot of what, what you would consider Fourth Amendment protections for citizens in general. A dog can be walked through any public place and smelling as you go, which allows it, which allows the police to search, that gives police probable cause, I'm sorry, it gives police reasonable suspicion to search a bag, to search a locker, to search a person. So this is shortcutting the probable cause. The reason that this is important in schools is because principals are, are held to a lower standard. They're held to reasonable suspicion. That was decided through the Supreme Court through time. US versus Place is an important SCOTUS, Supreme Court of the United States decision because in that, there's a holding that decided everything about the K-9 searches. From that point on, it was considered a holding, but they used it as a dictum, which means that the Supreme Court wrote a law. And it never was argued in the Supreme Court. It was never argued in legislature. And here we are, wanting to bring K-9 units in to randomly search the students' lockers. When you're talking about random, you're talking about having no probable cause. That means any day, just pick a, throw a dart. And on that day, without any reason, they can bring them in. And the reason they can bring them in is because the principal invites them. Principal being, having a lower standard, can actually invite the police in for reasonable suspicion. However, since dogs are not, and this is a little bit complicated, but since dogs are not a Fourth Amendment search, they don't have to have reasonable suspicion or probable cause. This is the, this is the thesis that's being offered by the, the principal and the superintendent. You have an idea here that removes our Fourth Amendment rights of students, and I want to stop that. My students will be, my, my kids will be going to school at Fisherford High and I don't want them searched. So you understand my motivation. The. The, on the one side, I give you sort of a diagram of how you actually affect this. On the other side is the statement from Principal Roach and the superintendent, I'm sorry, Police Chief. Below that, I show some data. And one of the important pieces of data, there's two. The first one is dealing with categories of people. One of those is race. And it seems that race is an issue here. I won't go into that, but there is some issues with canines and race that I would like to talk about at some point in the future. But the important one is down at the bottom. There is just no drugs found in schools. If, Mr. Stevens, the last time you asked me if I'm worried about marijuana being in schools, and the simple answer is, it's not. It's not being found, it's not being suspected. And so, no, I don't think it justifies bringing canine units in. Even to find marijuana, I don't think it justifies that. And since I've said in the past that they can't easily or reasonably find heroin because of the concentrations, there isn't really much justification for bringing in. With this, without reasonable suspicion, you risk, you know, overkill. You know, you're just a bunch of administrators flexing your authority and not having reasonable suspicion. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. I want to keep the focus on education. I don't want this to be something where students have to think about, are the dogs coming today? You know, is it going to be this semester or next semester? Is it going to be again this semester if it's come once? One of the things I would offer as a compromise is having a demonstration at the beginning of school, or, you know, at some point in the semester, where you show what the dogs can do. And it gives the students an understanding that if they decide to bring drugs in, and there's reasonable suspicion that the principal, you know, suspects that they have it, he'll just call the police and they'll bring the dogs through and find it. The other side of that, the willingness to compromise is to write a policy that defines very clearly on what grounds are considered reasonable suspicion for bringing dogs in. Get rid of this random, unannounced search idea, and say, it's not random. It's when we find out that there's drugs, we're going to bring the dogs in. You can say that, I'll compromise with that. But I won't allow this to be a broad, you can do what you want to the police and to the principal.
Thank you.
So, is there any questions?
Did you state your name, sir?
Sorry, Neil Delphal.
Thank you.
May I ask, do we have a date when this is coming into policy? Is there...
We need to schedule our meeting, because we've got a lot to catch up on since summer. So, not yet. The answer is not yet.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen Marso, and I want to thank you for letting me have a brief minute to speak about a concern that I have that's recently come to light. This is my daughter Kinsey, and she's recently moved from fourth grade at Crocker up to fifth grade at McKay. And so, the day before she was scheduled to start school, we discovered she was no longer eligible for busing, as the route that she is, having calculated from our house to the school, is 1.4 miles away, a tenth of a mile below the transportation policy of 1.5 miles. So, my understanding is that although the route that we would typically use, which is going down Ashby State Road, is 1.6 miles, the actual mileage that this is calculated off of is based on the shortest route from my house to the school. What I feel that has been neglected in the calculation is the safety of my child walking to school along this route alone at the age of 10, with varying circumstances, including and not limited to the weather. The roads, Fisher Road and Ringe Road are very rural roads, rural areas, where she's left open to many potential dangerous scenarios. There are multiple blind spots where the road curves, solar glare, as well as there's not, there not being one sidewalk or pedestrian pathway the entire length of the route. In fact, when looking at the mileage between my house and McKay, using Fisher Road on the Google Maps, they actually have a spot where it says, "Use caution, as the information given may contain errors, along with sections of the route not suited for walking." The most alarming part for me, as a parent, is the expectation that a 10-year-old is to safely cross John Fitch Highway from Fisher Road to Ringe Road without a crosswalk during two of the busiest times of the day. Traffic is moving at a fast pace, and it's coming from multiple directions. Fitchburg State University has a crosswalk and a flashing light, not to mention that they've recently redone the sidewalks for their college-age students to safely cross John Fitch Highway. However, where my daughter would cross, there are none of these precautions. I have sent out an email encouraging anybody to come and join me on the walks in the morning, because there literally are no sidewalks the entire length of the pathway of going down there. Not to mention, the road has actually just been closed for them to do repairs on the bridge. And I just feel that over a tenth of a mile, it's, you know, she's by herself. There's not one person that you would encounter along the way, that when we've gone and done the walk ourselves, there hasn't ever been anybody else on the road. All the way up to the school, where even in front of McKay on that side, there's gardens with flowers. When she leaves school, she would have to walk back against the traffic, which is actually where everybody lines up to get, pick up their kids. The parent pickup line is there. So, I think it leaves things open for her to be injured, to get hit by a car. And I feel that the safety of her over a tenth of a mile is, I understand if it was that she was on, or if we lived on the same side of the road, where over by Fitchburg State, they have all of the walkways. But being on the opposite side of that road, I can't, I'm not even sure if I'm supposed to leave her home alone, never mind have her walk alone to school on those roads. And I did bring pictures that I can leave with everybody to show just the different routes in the area, just because it's not, I just, I'm surprised that that's not a factor.
I did take the walk with Ms. Marso and Kinsey last Thursday, and a lot of her fears are there. If maybe we can't do the bus, I'm just wondering if there could be an officer that could possibly monitor these roads, because Ringe Road is extremely dangerous to be walking on, adult or child. There are cars that don't even see you, because there's so many bends in the road, and the sun is glaring at you, that we actually had a few vehicles stop short and have to quickly move off to the side, because they did not see us. And this is not just, we're talking about Kinsey, anybody who walks that road. It could be me. It's really a dangerous road that time of the morning. So, I don't know if there's something, you know, busing may not be the option, but if there's, we could have maybe an officer do ride-bys, or...
Who's responsible for the busing issues?
Well, there's a safety, it would be the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, but there is a safety committee that's made up of Assistant Superintendent, a school committee member, and then the, I think, the Transportation Director. So, usually, if there's further discussion or other kinds of things like that, it would be that group and that group, they even do site visits, and, you know, look at all the options.
So, that hasn't happened yet?
No. And the option that I was given was that she could go to Long Joe instead, and that was not, that's not an option for us. We chose McKay, or that's the school that we wanted. She's happy, she's been there for two and a half weeks. I can't imagine pulling her out and moving her, just because it would be more convenient for busing. I don't base where I want my child to go on busing.
Driving is not...
I can do it in the mornings, I can't do it in the afternoons, I work.
You're looking for an afternoon solution?
I mean, I would do both, but there wasn't an option to do that. I have two children. One goes to Crocker still, and one goes to McKay. So, to be in two places at once is difficult for me, and I don't have any way of, you know, I have my parents that will do it when they're here, but they moved down to Florida for the winter. So, after that, it's up to me. And I did go and pick her up the first few weeks where I was going down there, and then my parents have done it too. But it takes 40 minutes for, so I take my hour lunch to go sit for 40 minutes to get her out of the school and go back home. So, I mean, I can do it, but...
Yes.
So, I have just a couple of questions. And I, I'm sorry, I have to work early in the morning. I could have taken you up on your offer, because I totally can feel your angst about this. I mean, it's your child. So, I was in a very similar situation when my daughter went to Rhinegold. We're just under the piece, and, you know, my husband always traveled, and I was always out early. And I'm just curious, because I think at that time, there was, I'm not trying to put the, you know, the burden on you, but I'm wondering if there's been any discussion through PTOs at McKay about ride shares or any kind of...
I...
I wonder if that's something that might be a potential... There's, I, we didn't want to violate open meeting law, and so, there was just a hesitancy to get too much information ahead of time. But from some of the digging, I, you know, we're looking at a potentially big, you know, monetary piece here that we don't necessarily have, of over a couple hundred thousand dollars, if we did change the minimums, right? So, I think that that's something that maybe Bob Jokula can speak to. But, so, that's money we don't really have right now, as far as, because of changing that for one individual. It would allow everybody else to do it. So, my other question is, I'm just curious if on that route, there are other children that...
Not one.
Not one. And so, a cross guard, or...
Why not...
Well, over the years, when my son is that age, he's in second grade now, eventually there'll be another one, and there might be kids in that area, because I know there's kids that are younger, but they're not at that age where they're going to the middle school at this time.
Yeah, we did not see one, one other person, let alone another student, on that walk.
Why don't I sit down with Bob and Mrs. Hildreth? And if we did, do we have a committee? And we've had one in the past, and we haven't had to meet in a while, so we need to have a meeting. So, Bob, if you set that up, and then we will get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to leave your information with me, I'll give it to the committee.
Has, I don't know, have you been able to contact any, the PTO at McKay?
I didn't really know how to approach it. I'd never have, you know, I haven't had to deal with that. We've always, I mean, I live on a dead-end road, so I'm not unaware of having to make...
No, I know.
Adjustments to go, like the bus doesn't come down my street ever. So, that's not a problem that we would meet. But I don't know if, there's pictures that they, I've never had anybody, or I've never had to do anything, so I never knew where I should bring that. And that was what my first line of approach was, was to contact the person who's in charge of the transportation.
Yeah.
And I spoke to her, and then I've spoken to Mr. Jokula as well. So, but no, it's absolutely a good suggestion.
I wonder, I know that a bunch of families at Rhinegold ended up working some stuff out, but not, and again, not to say...
No, and that's what, it's definitely a very good suggestion, and it's not something that I had thought to even, you know, as an option, but that's what I would have to find out.
Yeah.
I haven't had, I don't, I work 10 to 7, so it's difficult for me to get down there and do the networking, so I can make phone calls from my house. But at the time, I mean, it's a new school, I haven't met any of the other people, so...
I would also start with the principal. The principal might be able to give you, the principal would be able to give her some ideas of who might be in that area, right?
I know that the secretary, when I called down to the school to find out about the mileage, that she had calculated it at 1.7. So, it's neither here nor there. I think that, when we walked it the other day, it actually, walking that route is 1.8 miles, as opposed to driving it, which is another, it's, it brings it into question that part of whether or not you base their walking distance on driving distance or on actual walking distance.
Well, I think the way it's done is that it's done the same way through the Transportation Office, so that it's done the same way.
Right.
So, whatever it is, it's the same for everybody.
But that's, and I do get that, it's just that, and I'm not trying to circumvent that, I certainly understand it. But that's the thing, is that Fisher Road is not a road that typically people go down, and especially in the wintertime when there's snow, that is like one of those roads, we, there's people that sit at the bottom of it in their cars, doing I-don't-know-what. And I just feel like to calculate it off of that road is a bad idea. I mean, it's impassable in the winter, so I just, I wouldn't want her down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Superintendent's Report.
Just one...
We didn't finish the numbers, 7:15, the first delegate. We need an alternate, which is on the, yeah.
An alternate for the MASC, SC and the MAS's joint conference. You've got Mr. Stevens will be the delegate, and we need to elect an alternate. A motion, any...
Marissa's going, Sally?
I'm going, yeah.
Okay. Then I will nominate Sally.
Second. Do I second?
Second, okay, that's fine. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy to do it.
Okay. Now, Superintendent's Report.
Just very quickly, for the people at home, and I know if you were here before it got dark, and it gets dark very early now, you were able to see the front of Memorial.
Yes.
That's just a fabulous, other joint collaborative project of our own staff. It's something I have been asking for almost since the day I arrived and had meetings here. And it took something that had really just grown over and showed a total disregard for how things looked, to something that looks very, very nice. And Mr. Firmani took the lead and jumped on that. The DPW, these ties were incredible with their backhoes. They wouldn't let me use them. I wanted to, but they said, no, not allowed. And then Mr. Firmani came in with his crew and did the rest of the work. So, there's this short video, it is up on FPS First, but it shows the difference. You can see, it had totally encroached on all of the benches. That's what it looks like now from the street. And that's what it looks like from the side. Pretty impressive. So, thank you, Mr. Firmani, and all the volunteers, they deserve a round of applause.
Absolutely.
So, we have some communications, Nature's Classroom. Not sure who is in charge or presenting that. Field trip? Is it Fran? Are you doing that? Yep. So, you have the information in your packet on Nature's Classroom?
We're just seeking approval to start fundraising for this trip. It'll be the third year that we've gone since we've reestablished it. And as you can see from your notes, the first year we did, a couple of years ago, we had 30 students, last year we were up to 58. So, it's growing steadily. And we are open house this Thursday, so I'm hoping to get approval, so I can announce that to the parents then and take those steps forward. We have a couple of corporate sponsors, primarily Uno, so I'd like to get some dates set with them. It's not an overtly pricey trip when you consider everything in there, but if we don't offset the cost of transportation and things like that, then it starts creeping up, creeping up, and creeping up. So, if we can fundraise, or at least we take care of the transportation piece of it, it makes the trip a lot more affordable for everybody else.
Any questions? It's the same trip as Fitchburg.
Yeah, that's great.
It's a great trip.
Thank you. That was Thomas, thank you.
Yep, okay.
Okay. And next, we've got the technology team. I think it's important, you heard our student representative talk about the new 100 Chrome Books at Fitchburg High School. That's just a tip of the technology iceberg. So, Eileen is here to just give you a very quick update on what's happening in the district regarding technology.
As usual, I do have part of my tech team here, but they're behind the scenes right now, so you'll see them very soon, but that's usually... right now, so you'll see them very soon, but that's usually where our, uh, tech team usually is, behind the, behind the walls and, um, in the walls and, and things as well. So, uh, thank you in advance for allowing me to provide, to take some time and provide the, uh, update. We've got some kind of really fantastic things that are occurring, some of them, uh, are in the walls and whatnot, which we'll go over, and some of the things that are happening in our classrooms as a result of the work that's, uh, occurring. So, one of the major pieces is that we've actually had a wireless infrastructure upgrade. Let me just bring up my notes. And this was actually a part of the E-Rate Initiative, actually E-Rate 2.0, which the main emphasis on that now is access to broadband and then the resources that, um, we can bring into our classrooms by providing the broadband. So, it's very specific in nature, but what we've been able to do is to add wireless access, basically from STEM to Stern in all of our buildings. And this is an enterprise network, so this isn't something that we've been kind of piecing together as we have now for probably six to eight years to provide some hotspots in some buildings and certain places. And if you tilt one computer or device this way, you'll be able to get access to that. This really is enterprise-wide. We are actually 99% done, um, with this. We're kicking the tires now that everyone's back from summer vacation. Uh, it has impacted every single school, so we've been, um, our principals and the staff have been very gracious about accommodating all of the work that, the workarounds that had to occur as far as we would, this particular initiative. Still staying with infrastructure, I just want a couple other things to note. We have updated all of our servers, uh, the end of last year in our schools, and some of those were actually seven to 10 years old. Uh, you can probably, with the, um, information that's provided here, see one of the most significant pieces is that we're talking terabytes now, we're not talking gigabytes. So, when we had some servers that were seven to 10 years old, yes, we were actually pretty antiquated and risking end of life or a kind of, uh, an issue that could occur. So, we feel very comfortable now that, uh, we've been able to provide, uh, new servers, uh, new storage. And then another thing is the network attached storage, NASs as they're called, I think this is going to be a really growing, a good growing point for us in the district. This provides for video to be actually stored and easily retrieved at the school level, at the district level, and then even, um, in a Fitchburg Public School YouTube secured area, so basically anywhere that you can get to an internet device. And we're looking at harvesting videos with our staff, of our, of our staff, um, when we're looking at promising instructional strategies and things, but then being able to harvest that to bump it up to, um, from a Crocker, for example, to a district level where we can then access it for use across the district and other teachers can access it as well. So, pretty exciting, um, we've deployed those. And we are also looking at working with the Department of Ed around a reusable learning object, so it's a new acronym, RLOs, that, uh, that's out there, and this will help us in that area. And what are we attaching all of this to? Well, it's not attaching anymore. We're actually looking at a pretty, pretty significant Chromebook footprint that we've been deploying, uh, as your student, um, thing, uh, mentioned, uh, that we, you can see the, the major impact has been at Fitchburg High, but we have them all around the district and we are looking at, um, really increasing that footprint. That also, we also have quite a footprint of what we would consider legacy labs. You're looking at one right now where we have students that are able to go to a lab in, in every single one of our buildings. Um, and also what we're looking at are other things that round out a really solid classroom environment for access. And that's pretty much your projectors, your document cameras. So, what we have is a, an established, a relatively, um, similar suite in every educational environment, so that students moving between them and our staff moving among, in between, those can expect the same type of, uh, access for that. So, the, the Chromebooks that we have, um, have been funded primarily through, uh, grants and school choice. The, the grant, one of the largest grant was our Race to the Top, which you know now is no longer available to us, or it was, um, extended over a few years with that. So, we are looking at maintaining this, uh, and specifically for, I'm going to move into what we're doing with them, uh, the main emphasis for this was actually the online testing that was occurring for our students. And we went down that road. We were on the cutting edge in Fitchburg and we are continuing now to look at online testing. Actually, the state is requiring this year that all of our fourth and eighth grade students be doing online testing. We are engaged in the national testing, the NAPs, that we've, um, been selected to participate in, actually here in, at Memorial, and that's completely online. So, in order to, to make sure that we have access to and we have enough devices for the, um, the testing, the DESC has a technology readiness tool that we'll be conducting. It's a survey and a tool, so that we can make sure if additional purchases need to, to be made. Uh, the, the issue around our Chromebooks, not an issue, I mean, it's, they're a perfect price point, they just look wonderful with the kids that are, you know, walking around the high school with a one-to-one environment, but they do have an end of life that we haven't experienced yet, and that's typically five years. So, we're looking at now maintaining this type of access and when needed, as our enrollment is increasing, um, to actually increase the, the devices that we have. Couple other initiatives, one-to-one student devices. We do have the Honors Academy that has rolled now through up into seniors, but we have just finished enrolling, um, my staff was involved in enrolling 190 Chromebooks for the high school distribution on Thursday and some additional ones that are coming in, so that will give a one-to-one environment for our seniors.
7:75?
No. The, yeah, let me back up. It is that, for the, for Fitchburg High School, that 190, um, is included in that, but we're looking at 50 more to meet the requirements for our senior class. Uh, you originally authorized this for the freshman class and Jeremy and his administrative staff reviewed, um, a lot of considerations and decided the senior class would benefit from this, and so...
So, you'd be at 8:25?
Yeah, approximately. We, uh, they've done a wonderful job at the high school getting our acceptable use policy signed and returned, uh, fabulous job. I can't say enough about, um, some of the strategies that they've been using at the high school. So, right now, the only limit to our seniors are the students that have not yet returned. I'm thinking though, that as soon as all of their, um, peers are receiving Chromebooks on Thursday, that that might also be an added incentive to get that signed, acceptable use policy back. So, we're looking forward to that in the next two weeks. We also are looking at, uh, actually broadening our online and blended learning to include our middle schools and actually looking at pilots this year to see what platform we might be using. We use Play-Doh now at our high school and had been using it at our Alt Ed. We're doing a pilot there now with another platform, Edge Annuity, and so we can actually look at a full year, uh, of an evaluation for this particular tool and if it might be more, um, one might be more suitable than the other potentially for our middle schools. Interestingly enough, just looking at where our students are, are going for, in some cases, school choice out, we now have over 30 students that are enrolled in either Greenfield or the tech, um, alternative, so that's a fully online, and of those 30 students that are enrolled there, more than half are elementary students. So, we have elementary, and we have parents who are making choices about full online resources and, and education for their students, something to be aware of.
How many?
Well, I think it's actually 16 out of 30, so it is over 50%, but, uh, that's just an interesting statistic as we, we monitor that kind of, uh, information and data. And then the curriculum embedded classroom tools, we're a Google district, so we've been doing a lot with Google productivity, being able to do, um, sharing and whatnot, but now we're moving also forward with Google Classroom. It's an integrated suite that allows our teachers even more, um, access to and from and in an online platform for our students. So, some of the things, I just wanted to show you a couple things that we're doing. Footsteps to Brilliance, you've seen that come across the desk before, we're continuing with that. So, that means that we have tablets, very similar to this, although, um, much more reinforced with a guard and a case for our, um, three and four and five-year-olds, uh, and we're going to be in year two of that, so we really hadn't been able to complete a whole year pilot, so we're, we're looking at continuing that particular piece for our literacy skills and expanding that hopefully. And then going up to the high school, we're working now, um, with, with Jeremy and, um, the business officer and Mr. Jokula around, um, what it looks like to have a state-of-the-art auditorium at our high school. And that means projector, projection mics, the whole audio system that was not quite, uh, as contemporary potentially as it could be, I think, with the, the building that was, that occurred, but that is now 16 years ago. So, it's, it's time to take a look at that and we're really kind of excited to see what that might bring and open up opportunities for that auditorium to really be a, a kind of a, uh, oh, a, a real piece or a real place for people to, to be able to use that kind of, um, technology. And then, we, we want to really go cutting-edge, cutting-edge. Google, again, we're a Google district. Google Expeditions is something that's relatively new and it's, uh, taking advantage of virtual reality and what we can provide for resources for our students around VR. You probably know that there's a lot of AR, augmented reality, in the news with, uh, Pokemon Go, uh, but now, what does it look like for virtual reality and what we can do? And I was hoping that we might have some volunteers to actually see what our kids are going to be seeing in a Google Expedition, um, you might have seen some advertisements that are out there, Samsung or whatnot with, uh, headsets, but, uh, could, could, would, you wouldn't indulge me in, uh, getting a little example?
On the end.
Okay, I have five, I mean, I have five headsets and here's the, the man behind the scene, Chris Turner, one of our techs, and actually, Dina, who you know, is one of our tech teams as well.
Ms. Spiny, what, what are we, what are we talking about in terms of hardware for a, and you, you, your IT, that's it, for the school department?
Oh, well, my IT, no, we have, actually have three technicians.
Okay.
Uh, and we have a, our communications specialist is Dina Gagni, that's your Facebook. Uh, Chris Turner is our data specialist and state reporting, so, um...
I was going to say, you couldn't put yourself in that.
No, no. No, we have, we have a very talented team.
Mayor should have one.
No, it's, uh...
He's going.
Oh, man.
Yeah, no, it is.
I think it goes, it's been over the glasses.
Yes, it does go over the glasses.
It's over your glasses, if you need your glasses.
Yeah.
I need the glasses.
So, basically, what Google Expeditions, Joe, just going to have to hold on for just a second, uh, allows us is that a teacher with a tablet can control, um, expeditions, and there are over 600 of these that we can take our students on. Some of them are around careers and what it actually looks like to be a biomechanical engineer, others are trips or tours to different colleges and universities that they might be considering in a virtual reality space.
Oh, if I turn around, do I see Lincoln? Nice. Sorry.
Did yours already start?
I guess it's real.
Yeah, you could just...
But Gene, there's nothing in yours yet.
So...
No, I'm seeing Lincoln.
Right now, yes, right now, we're taking you to the Lincoln Memorial. I would, I would caution you to probably remain seated, uh, until you get used to these. It's not a good idea to be able to...
Who's that guy over there?
It's worrying me.
Don't forget to look up.
Are they all seeing the same thing?
Yes.
They're all in the Lincoln Memorial.
And a teacher now can mo- can actually watch where each of the students are here and actually can call out to where they'd like you to visit.
Uh, Washington Fifth is going to be a virtual reality.
Yes, but we might have a...
I've already done it.
Pre-work.
Yeah.
You could do pre-work with students to give them a heads up.
Yeah.
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 Think of what we'll save on busing.
So, would you like to visit Mount Rushmore, the Statue of Liberty, the Washington Monument? Any, Mount Rushmore.
So, does the little arrow in here?
Yeah, what's the arrow for?
So, that was a call-out that I did, so if I wanted to draw your attention to something, I can tap and hold on the tablet I'm holding and it will draw, uh, an arrow on your screen and on my screen, I can see all the little smiley faces going towards that circle.
Most of them there. And the content is all there for our teachers as well, so there's quite a bit of, uh, information that, and, and stories, answers and questions and things that are here that the teachers can access.
You can see behind you too, I mean, it's, it's the whole thing.
Yeah.
It's 360.
Look up, Mayor, look up, look up.
That's when you got to be careful.
Yes, you have to hold on. A swivel chair works best.
Yeah.
How about taking a trip to the top of the Washington Monument?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And what can you see from there?
Oh, yeah.
So, I, in anticipation of the fact that once our students are starting to use these...
That's great. Are you going to post that?
I'll send it tomorrow, send it to...
The school committee traveling virtual, virtual reality.
To Washington, yes, so, um, all over the world. Under the ocean, on the top.
It is. Did you try it?
Well, I, I tried it recently, my son-in-law's involved in it and he just came back from Amsterdam where he was using it as part of...
Like, really, he went to Amsterdam?
He really went to Amsterdam, yes. And, uh, one of the things they're looking at, is, as you've looked through it now, the camera will be on the 50-yard line and so forth, and you can have 50,000 of these watching the Patriots game from the 50-yard line and virtually being right there. I, I, I used it and I was watching a hockey game right on the boards and it was just amazing.
Yeah, we've had a chance to see a, a classroom and the teacher orchestrating it or facilitating it through this type of device where all the kids are drawn toward the arrow and you basically see all the kids go, but heads moved, and then the next thing is, "Oh," in, in unison. So, we do anticipate that as soon as we are starting to, um, introduce this to our students and our staff, that they're also going to be wanting to create these themselves. So, for basically a $500 investment, we can provide the 3D types of cameras that, and I think Chris has been up and done a 3D, um, tour of Fitchburg High, so that some of our middle school kids can actually do it in 3D first before they have a chance...
We introduced Chris, I don't know if we did.
Chris Turner, when he was walking around, I would say, yes, our data specialist and, and reporting specialist for the state.
He also takes care of our webpage, keeps all that up to date.
Actually, Dina does the webpage.
Oh, Nina.
Dina, yeah, and she's our communications, Facebook.
Okay, all right, never mind, I won't say a word.
I, as I said, a lot of this is behind the scenes anyway, so that's why a lot of things happen that you don't necessarily see out in the, um, in the classroom, so, looking forward to it.
They're just amazing.
Are, so, are kids trying this in classrooms yet?
We have, we have a unit of five now that we are going to be going out, showing our principals and our teachers, um, our ally and honors coaches are going to be demonstrating it with students, and we are looking at trying to secure some additional funding for these, uh, and it might be some crowdfunding that we look at for the schools, which they can engage in, donorschoose.org, GoFundMe and that type of thing, uh, as part of the ally piece with Title One. Title One is buying a 30-unit, so we will be able to go into a classroom and, or, it, they're, I think they're pretty reasonable, but it is expensive. For a 30-unit, it's just under $8,000 for all the equipment with the phones and the tablet for the teachers, the, um, rapid chargers and things, so...
Eighty, is that what you're saying?
Eight.
Oh, okay.
Eight, yeah, so, we're getting there. So, that's, that's my present, thank, thank you for indulging me in, uh, some of the things that are coming up.
Great.
What does it cost to be?
$25 a piece.
$25 for the viewer, $200 for the camera, that's, that is in there.
How much, 20, for the whole unit?
For everything together, $225, and then a tablet is about 200.
Oh, it is, look at that.
It's an iPhone?
All right.
It's an HTC Android phone.
Oh, that was smart, so they made it so that the unit will always be good and you fit in the...
Your own phone.
Wow.
But our cha- our challenge is, we need to, for us to provide this to students, we need to provide a phone.
Right.
So, there, the companies are, you're looking at, is it...
Uh, HTC is the, is the phone company.
Is the phone, so we would buy the whole unit and then try to pilot this to the ally folks, the elementary honors academy, who are now part of the Title One program around supplemental education.
Can Title One purchase some of this stuff?
That's what we're doing, we're buying one unit, Title One.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was really exciting.
Thanks.
Then a quick update on the Summer Services, Summer Food, uh, Food Program, the Nutrition Program. program. Jill and David.
What do you have for dieting? Ritual food, no calories included.
My mistake, I thought somebody knew.
It's okay. Bob made us do it, so it's, it's okay. While they're getting set up, thank you for having us. I did want to mention that National School Lunch Week is coming up in October, the 11th through the 14th. And that means guest-serving week. So, anybody who's interested, the managers will be reaching out to people, but anybody who wants to do it can also reach out to me, and we'll find you a place to go.
What was the date?
The week of the 11th through the 14th, so Columbus Day week.
Yep.
And you get a free meal out of it, and it's wear here and that, and sometimes gloves. You can wear a hat if you want. We have chef's hats.
Well, just so we don't lose any time, I'll just go over the donations. There's a donation, actually, a friend of mine had a trombone and donated a $100 trombone to the band group. And sometime this year, I am going to reach out again and try to see if there are more instruments out there sitting in people's basements and attics and cellars, because we've gotten some great instruments that way. Ray Cosenza has a donation from the Pittsburgh Football Boosters for $600 to supplement the, the athletic revolving fund. The boosters, zone-blocking.
Shoot.
Shoot. Thank you. A zone-blocking shoot for $2,346 was donated from Headwall Photonics. A donation to technology of 14 boxes of new Corning Microslides for the use with microscopes for a total cost of $51.60. The Crocker PTO has donated 30 Chromebooks for K-1 at Crocker Elementary School for Hope Sudbury, which is a group that I ended up getting a connection with, and very interested in doing volunteer work and donations to Pittsburgh, and they donated.
Nice.
School backpacks and school supplies for a value of $500. And then the Hollingsworth and Bose Company donated 15 backpacks with school supplies valued at $1,000.
What is the Hollingsworth and Bose Company?
That, I do not know. Mike Helen is the one submitting for Fran Thomas, so I'm not sure what they do. Then grants, we have grants that are being submitted. And one is the TD Bank Charitable Foundation Grant for $59,000. If awarded, this will allow us to provide after-school programming similar to 21st Century at Memorial Middle School. Another grant is promoting adolescent health, and that is a grant for $4,100. It's a three-year of funding for adolescent health initiatives. Okay, looks like you're ready to go.
Yeah, ready to go. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Not as exciting of that presentation that Eileen just did. That was pretty, pretty cool. We wanted to give a brief, brief update on the summer feeding program that we do. We had realized that, you know, we feed great meals, breakfast, lunch, snack, and now dinner during the school year, but we don't talk much about what happens during the summer. We serve kids throughout the summer as well. So, we do want to do a quick, quick overview on what the summer program is. We do, it's the summer feeding program that we do here in Pittsburgh. It's a USDA-sponsored program, much like the regular school lunch program that we do. It allows high-knit communities the opportunity to ensure children in these communities continue to receive a nutritious meal when school is not in session. These are free meals that meet the federal nutrition guidelines and are provided, and are provided free of charge to anyone 18 or under, no questions asked. There's no programs that you need to be enrolled in or anything like that. If you're 18 or under, and you're, come to one of our sites, you get a free meal. The way the sites work, any nonprofit, a school, youth group, church, et cetera, can sponsor a site in an eligible area. Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh is eligible for the summer feeding program, and we can provide up to two meals a day free of charge. Sites can be schools, parks, youth centers, state or municipal pools, neighborhoods or anywhere, anywhere children may gather. And sponsors can make their own meals or purchase meals from another entity or another sponsor. Here in Pittsburgh, or Pittsburgh Schools is the sponsor of the summer feeding program. And these are some of the, these are all the sites this past summer that we sponsored and served meals at. The school sites, Pittsburgh High, South Street, McKay, Crocker, then we had Coolidge Park where, where the, the city pool is, Park Hill Playground at that splash, where their splash park is. We had some non-universal sites, the YMCA of Pittsburgh, the Boys and Girls Club, the Gustav Johnson State Pool, Camp Lowe in Lancaster, because it's affiliated with the Boys and Girls Club. The students that go to Camp Lowe in Lancaster are actually coming from Boys and Girls Clubs, we're able to feed them. I'm sorry, YMCA. I apologize. And I was doing that all summer with my staff, getting them confused. From the, from the YMCA, we actually feed them breakfast at the Y, then bring them over to, when they go over to Camp Lowe for lunch, we bring them lunch as well. And we actually had, we're, we're, our reputation is starting to get out there. Clinton Park and Recreation reached out to us, asked if we could sponsor one of their sites, and we did. So, we have a partnership now with, with a site in Clinton, Massachusetts. So, there are some other sites that are affiliated with the Pittsburgh Public School sponsorship. These are other sites, Cogswalt Park, Crocker Playground, Green Street Playground, and the Kids Stop, where they do their own sponsorship, but they purchase their meals from us. As a sponsor, they can elect to make their own, or they choose to purchase them, and they're purchasing them from us. Just a note about our, of our, about our meal production. What do we do? How do we make these meals? Well, what we do, we turn Pittsburgh High School kitchen and a good portion of their cafeteria into a mass food production kitchen. This summer, we were averaging about 1,000 lunches a day.
Wow.
And, you know, where the, the meals are packed. Yeah. It's spread out through all of those sites, you know, like I said, as far away as Clinton. The meals are packed in temperature-appropriate units, transported in one of our vans. We have, we have four vans that we use to the sites in and around Pittsburgh. Just pictures of the, the meal trays set up. Like I said, we spread out into the cafeteria, because we need a lot of space to make all these meals. And there's a sample of what the meals look like as they're being filled and packaged ready for, for delivery. Just some numbers. Oh, I'm sorry. Sample menu, we run a two-week cycle menu throughout the summer. We try to focus on meals that are easily eaten with the hands, because these are, it's, they're, they're not necessarily a sit-down-at-a-table type of site. It could be at a playground, sitting, you know, against the fence at the pool, something that, you know, a sandwichy-type things, or, or, you know, chicken tenders, finger foods, things like that. So, we run this cycle menu throughout the summer. Program starts the Monday after school ends and goes until the Friday before school begins. So, it's, it's busy. Some, some hard numbers, going back to 2012, we've increased our breakfast numbers from a little under 5,000 for the entire summer to 8,400 for the entire summer this past summer. Lunch, we've been making great strides. In 2012, we were at almost 11,000 lunches for the entire summer, and this year, we hit almost 23,000 lunches served throughout the entire summer at all of our sites. Add 'em all up, we broke our record by over 1,000 meals. So, combined, we served over 30,000, almost 31,000 meals to children, well, children, 18, folks 18 and under, all throughout Pittsburgh, that portion of Lemonster where the Boys and Girls Club is, Camp Lowe in Lancaster, and Clinton Park and Recreation. A few other numbers, the monies, because it's a federal USDA reimbursement program, the monies that come in from that, we use to obviously, you know, cover the cost of food, cost of labor, cost and whatnot. And we always try to make sure we ensure we can put something back into the Nutrition Services revolving account. This year, we were able to return $21,700.06. Every dime of that will get reinvested in the next, next year's program. More equipment, better menus, more staffing, things like that. So, each year, we're able to, to improve our program using that return from each year. And the other thing, I'm a big supporter of, we are, obviously, our job is to feed kids. In my opinion, we have another responsibility, that's to keep people gainfully employed as well. Since 2009, well, in 2009, we had a staff of six, and we've been able to increase that to a staff of 15.
These are our regular.
These are our regular Nutrition Services workers that work throughout the summer, 15 of them this year, and I'm already predicting we're probably gonna have to bump that up to 17 for next summer. So, it's really a great program. It's, it's sort of been my baby for years. I've been growing it, and it's really, really done well. What can you do? We, we try to talk it up as much as possible. It's never too early to start talking about the next summer. It's a turnkey program. If anyone knows of any kind of organized youth activity, a, a summer camp during the week, a sports program, even if it's only a week long, we can provide meals free of charge to that program. It's as simple as a phone call to me or to Jill, letting us know the weeks and days they're gonna be in operation, and we show up with a staff member, serve the meals, and we leave. You don't have to lift a finger, use it to.
We'll even take the trash with us.
We'll even take the trash if you need us to. So, it's a great selling point for folks doing camps or any enrichment program. Meals, breakfast and lunch, if they want, included as part of, of the programs, so.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
You had a lot of information about the number of meals.
Yes.
Do you have any number of students?
I do not have, well, that would be hand in hand. For the most part, all of our sites are some sort of an enrolled site where there's an enrichment program going on. So, we wouldn't be able to gather hard data, because the nature of the program is it's an open site, no questions asked, here's a meal. We piggyback off of those enrolled sites, because there's sort of a captured audience. For example, some of the parks, the Coolidge Park, Park Hill Park, Park and Recreation does programs, Summer Up does programs, but we're also able to capture kids who are just hanging out there, and word spreads and things like that, so.
If I could, for the Title I, the Journeys, and the 21st Century programs, we house both of those at Crocker. And we, on a daily basis, would average probably half a dozen families who would come in mostly for breakfast. And they'd be either dropping their camper off or come in to kind of get the morning started. But I, I won't say every day, but several days a week, there'd be a, a number of families there with younger ones and a mom or dad or Grammy. And so, it was actually a nice way for them to sit down and have a meal with their kids who had to be someplace by 8:30 in the morning, even in the summer. The other thing, I, just like, kudos to these folks. I mean, it's military precision, but they also pack lunches for all the field trips.
Yeah.
And those field trips included trips on buses to the beach and to the Aquarium in Boston, and everything is there. The coolers are packed, the, everything is cold, everything's complete, there are snacks. It's pretty impressive when you have 90 kids on the road all over the state, and you don't have to worry about having the kids have a full meal, and everything is set for you. It's really very impressive.
I mean, David has been promoted by SEDEXO this year?
Yes. Has a new title, sort of, kinda. He's still Assistant Director. In the SEDEXO world, he's an Operations Manager now, which puts him at a higher, at a higher grade, in case he wants to move on, but he's not going anywhere. So, that was part of the reasoning behind the promotion.
Oh, no.
But David, Dave has really done a great job on this program, and we're only limited by the number of kids we can get to sites. That's, that's one of the big issues. Our concern, you know, we serve roughly 4,000 kids a day during the school year for lunch, and I don't know where they're eating in the summer. So, we just get more places to feed them, and we can do that, but that's our biggest challenge.
Dave's never gonna leave. He'd have to buy a whole new wardrobe.
Yeah, really.
A whole new.
You guys, you guys are stuck with me for a while.
I also want to, just to piggyback, so today, I was at Rheingold, I meant to say when you were doing facilities report. I happened to be there with the excavation of the pipes, because the kitchen drainage was not working as it should. And it was the most amazing construction scene, and, right next to the playground, and sewer wastewater water division was there as well. And I picked up the phone and I called Jill, and I said, can we give these guys lunch? You know? And he was like, right on it. And so, we had our DPW wastewater and, you know, all our, you know, workers on the city side who were at the school go in afterwards and get lunch.
That was a good idea.
And it's like, you know, so, yeah, so they, they went in the school, and, and, you know, Lisa, the manager there, took care of them. And thank, thank you, Jill and Dave, for all you do. I mean, you're really, you know, you're feeding us all.
Well, we, we do want, you know, the community to know what we do. It was very exciting being at the Community Fair last Thursday night.
Yes.
Notice we got a front-page picture from that. But to me, all of those things are promoting our program. I want people out there in the community seeing what our kids eat for lunch every day.
It's good stuff.
Yes, go ahead, Ma.
And I just want to add, I have had the pleasure of eating lunch once at South Street and once at McKay. And I have to say that school lunches have really come a long way.
Yep.
The food is excellent. I had one student tell me I should get the shepherd's pie, because it's wicked good. And it was.
Well, you'll have to come up to the high school and try our new pizza, because we're pretty proud of that. And, you know, I think we've made a lot of changes. I've said it many times, I'm extremely proud of our program, and our staff works hard to put out the product that we do. So, please come and visit us. We love to have visitors.
I just want to add that I was talking to a teacher from Medfield who happened to talk about the school lunches there and how awful they were. They just.
Yeah, we love to hear that, too.
And I said, we are getting praise.
Especially if it chart wells. Just kidding. We actually were talking to somebody at the Community Fair about, they were from, what's the regional one, Oakmont, and they had a lot to say about the lunch. But I said, well, you just have to come back to Pittsburgh and have good food, so.
I know. When we go to MASC, and the different food companies are there, and we go, they don't even really want to talk to us, because they know we're not changing.
No, you know, it's, it's a team effort, and every single one of our staff members comes to the plate, puts their little piece in, and we just kind of steer the ship. But I think, you know, our outlook is to try to give the students of Pittsburgh the best possible meal we can. So, we're always striving to get there. And some, you know, some days, not so much, but, you know, we'll get there. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I just have two last things. One is, you have a school choice to vote on and approve, and it's $10,000 for the science consumables. So, that's district-wide. Those are things that we have to replenish every year. And just a very quick enrollment update from today, and also, Deb Jeffries left all of the guidelines for the Scarecrow Guinness World Book of Records.
Good.
So, I'm sending that out to you. So, for a while, we'll have 5,478 students plus another, how many?
4,000.
4,000 scarecrows. But I, I thought you'd be interested in this, this is, what I took was, last year, September 21st enrollment was 5,312. The enrollment today is 5,478. So, another 166 students. And this is, these are hot numbers, like, right from, so, I think last year, our overall was what?
155.
155. So, already, you know, at this time of year, we're up another 11 students more than we had last year as an increase. So, right now, we're good to go. We've got the classroom space and all, but as we work on the Building Needs Subcommittee, and we look at, you know, space issues, if this continues, we're, we're really gonna have to look at that in, at, at all grade levels, because we're maxed out. But it's, it's a great problem to have, I can tell you that. And I think it's, it's really an affirmation of the fact that people are making this as a, as a choice to be at school here.
Bob, something Clarissa brought up the other day at our meeting, the 166. Have we done anything looking at people who have left? Have we?
The numbers here are the students who are here.
Right.
We've, we can adjust every day as students unenroll, transfer out, we confirm they've moved away. So, this is pretty accurate lifetime data.
Yeah, okay. Because I'm.
So, now...
Too niche's classroom second here.
You want to run these or what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we...
Up to seven.
16-717?
Second.
Well, they just want to take, you want to take that one individually, right?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to accept. Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 16-718 up through and including 16-732, I have a motion.
Motion.
Yes.
On 16-725... Yep. Grant for TD Charitable Bank.
Right.
That should be 59,000, not 25,000.
Okay.
Could we just do the donations up to 16-724? Bundle those?
Okay.
So, make a motion...
All right, so, yes, go ahead.
To make a motion to take 16-718 through 16-724 and approve them.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. 16-725 up through and including 16-732, I hear a motion.
Motion.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Motion for chairman?
Motion made, and seconded for chairman, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Mr. Chairman, good job.